We're going to call to order the regular meeting for the Town and Gilbert Planning Commission. The first item will be the Pledge of Allegiance. I'm going to ask Commissioner Cavaney if you could please lead us off on it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Next item will be roll call.
Chairman Brian Anderson.
Yep.
Vice Chairman Carl Blumfield.
Here.
Commissioner David Cavaney.
Here.
Commissioner Greg Froelich.
Here.
Commissioner Brian Johns.
Here.
Commissioner Les Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Philippa Labranti. And Commissioner James Torgerson.
Here.
Thank you. Next will be your approval of the agenda. So I'm going to ask a question out to the public right now. Is anybody here to speak on items, let's see, 19 to 20, which is Cadiz? Anyone here would like to address the commission on those two cases? So if not, I think we can move those to the consent hearing. So if we're okay with that, can I get our motion on the agenda? Vice Chair, please.
Chairman, I move to approve the agenda with the changes that you just discussed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johns. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Agenda is approved. We'll go along to Communications, Planning Committee, communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within the jurisdiction of the town but not on the agenda. Commission response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Does anybody here from the public wish to address the commission at this time? Not seeing any. We will move along to report from council liaison on current events. Member Peterson.
Thank you, Chairman. Like you said, council member Peterson here to speak to you this month. I just wanted to mention a couple of things. Last week, if you didn't notice, Gilbert was named Kindness USA. And we spent the week observing different ways to share kindness with people in the community. And it was really fun to watch people's stories online as they were able to share kindness with each other and their neighbors, or to experience kindness themselves. And I hope that we can keep that up and to always be known as a place that we're kind to our neighbors. As you probably know, Governor Ducey signed into effect a distracted driving ordinance law last week, or a week and a half ago now at this point. It does go into effect now as far as you should be driving hands-free in Arizona and following those regulations, but they will not be doing any kind of a fining system until 2021. So just keep that in mind. Let's go hands-free in AZ and speed down eyes up, as we say in Gilbert, and drive safely. One other thing I'd like to mention is I'm very proud to say that Judge James Bean, who was appointed to the Arizona Supreme Court, is a Gilbert resident. He was appointed last week by Governor Ducey. And Jim used to be a member of this planning commission here in Gilbert. And I think it's really a proud moment for us as Gilbert residents, and for me as Jim's friend, to have that happen for him and something for our town. And I wish him the best of luck serving in that role on the Supreme Court. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Peterson. Next, we have a presentation, a presentation and discussion of the 2020 General Plan Update. Who will be doing that?
Good evening, Commissioner Anderson and Planning Commissioners. Matt Klyzico with Matt Baker International is representing the consultant that is helping us with the 2020 General Plan Update, and he's here to share the status with you.
Here, thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Thank you, Chairman, Commissioners. Matt Klyzico with Michael Baker. We are excited to be in front of you, to bring you up to date on the 2020 General Plan. If you all recall, the last time we were in front of you was back in November of 2018 during a joint session with the council to really kind of kick off the project and talk to you about some of the preliminary feedback that we had received to that date. Tonight, I'd like to take the time to obviously bring you up to speed on a lot of work that's gone on since then. We've had certainly plenty of conversations with staff. We've had several General Plan Advisory Group meetings, as well as outreach with the community, and even participated in the student government days. So we've collected a lot of information. And so we want to roll out some of that to you and then talk about some of the next steps that we're going to be working towards over the summer to kind of set us up for bringing this document to fruition in 2020. One of the first things I wanted to talk to you about is our Community Assessment Report. So with all the feedback that we received, we brought a lot of the outcomes of that information together in a report. And that report is currently available on the city's website within the project's webpage. So for those in the audience, if you haven't had a chance to look at the document, you can go to the city's website, do a keyword search for 2020 General Plan Update. That'll be the quickest way to find the link to the project website. And you can look at the project documents and pull up the document. It's a fantastic read, I can tell you. You won't be able to put it down. So if you caught up on Game of Thrones, or you've seen The Avengers, crack open the Community Assessment. It's a very important document to this General Plan Update process because what it does is really capture some of the current characteristics and trends and conditions that exist within the town. Those are certainly important so that we make educated decisions about our future. But then the document also captures feedback that we've heard from our G-PAG committee, items particularly focused on vacant commercial corners, or concerns about when we do reach build-out, or issues relative to maintaining our infrastructure, or focusing on jobs. The Community Assessment also makes connections to what we're hearing back from the public. So some of that feedback has been focusing on jobs before housing, concerns about multifamily developments, need for more commercial development, increased congestion and preservation of our heritage. So those are some of the key words and topics that we've been hearing throughout this process. And so I would encourage you to read the document and see how those correlate to some of the findings that we discovered as we went through census data and looked through existing documents. And some of the overarching takeaways that I would leave with you before I move on to the next slide is that growth is, particularly population growth, is expected to continue in Gilbert. MAG's population projections for the town have it continuing on a steady pace all the way through 2050. We're also an aging community. Our median age is increasing. We're, as a community overall, getting older. And so with that growth, density and diversity of our development pattern is changing as well. And so what that triggers is this notion or understanding that we have to continue to create capacity for that growth, but we also have to figure out, how are we going to maintain the qualities that actually are driving that growth? So it's a really intricate balancing act that we're going to be working through, especially over this summer now, as we get into actually drafting the elements of the general plan So in tandem with developing that Community Assessment Report, we also looked at our vision validation. Or as you can imagine, every general plan typically starts off with a vision statement. It's that aspirational statement that describes that ultimate end state that Gilbert desires to be. And through conversations with our General Plan Advisory Committee, we heard a lot about the vision statement that exists in the general plan today has served us well. And it is still applicable to how the town would like to be in the future. And so we discussed as a committee that there were very few changes that were needed to that vision statement, except for a few to capture some of the more current conditions within the town, such as under the values. Gilbert will continue to grow into, changing that to Gilbert will continue to thrive as a town. And many of the values still hold true, as I mentioned. And the advisory group felt that little adjustments to those were required. So with the Community Assessment Report completed, with the vetting of the vision statement, our compass, so to speak, is set. And now we're at the stage where we're wanting to start to look at, how are we going to structure this general plan? And the structure of the general plan is certainly very important because from that structure, we then develop the goals and policies and action items that we're going to utilize to implement this plan. And so this topic is usually not a very important or key topic in updating a general plan. Most plans simply look at the state requirements and identify the general plan elements that we must address. We utilize those elements as chapters in the general plan, and you go in and draft the plan with that format in mind. But collectively, again, as we discussed with the advisory group, as we discussed it with staff, we looked at this approach and felt like it wasn't achieving the vision that we're trying to be as a community. Nor is it achieving or addressing the concerns and things that the community is conveying to us is important to them. And so we took a different look at our approach and identified an idea about organizing the document around a set of themes. And these themes are intended to convey what we are planning for. And in that matter, we are better setting up the community to develop goals and action items that will achieve our vision. So in this table, you kind of can see what I might mean by this. The table on the left is a set of the elements that we are either mandated to address or would electively address within the general plan. But if we transition to this concept of themes and focus more on action-oriented ideas about what we want to accomplish in Gilbert in the future, these themes can be focused around, we're planning for our community, we're planning to promote vibrant gathering places, protect our neighborhoods, increase housing options, encourage aging in place, and celebrate our history and culture. We're planning for our opportunity to encourage job growth, maintain our infrastructure, support educational excellence, improve health and wellness, live sustainably, embrace innovation, and maintain public safety. We're planning for connectivity. We're planning to bring us together, effectively manage congestion, improve mobility choices, enhance travel safety, and plan for new technology. And ultimately, we're planning for our future, which is really what this goal in branding of the general plan is about. So this is a significant shift in terms of the organization of the document, but again, we feel we'll make a better use of the tools that we have available to us because as we develop actions, the various elements will all feed into these various themes. So under any one theme, we might utilize land use, and character areas, and housing, and community design, all to achieve, promote vibrant gathering places, rather than focusing just on land use and not having any connection to our vision. So this is a concept we wanted to present to you tonight. We're going to be, over the summer, taking this out to the public to get their feedback on any specific themes that they think we may be missing, or they'd like to adjust. But at this point in time, just maybe a couple minutes, I'd like to pause and offer you the opportunity, if you have any thoughts or comments about just this particular concept or any language that you would like to see within this particular format.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? Commissioner Torgerson.
You're so excited about it, it's like watching a Grisham commercial or something.
Great, yes, thank you.
I appreciate that, actually. The excitement you have for, just, all I'm going to say is continue that because at least people will engage. Because I think one of the worst things that happens is people don't engage. That's really, and you and I have spoken before.
Yes.
At length, so I just, fantastic. Thank you for being excited.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Vice Chair.
I appreciated the insight and the different take that you're taking on this, where your focus is really on the community, not on the requirement or the legal requirements of this general plan. But the focus is on the community, and how do we address this and create this general plan that's not such a boilerplate type of thing? So I appreciate that, and I look forward to seeing it develop, and look forward to hearing what your feedback from our community is in regards to that, and with your engagement with them and your interaction with them. I hope that that goes really well and that you get a lot of positive feedback. Sounds like you already have, and that should continue, so.
Yes, thank you, Vice Chair. I would add that following this meeting, within the next few weeks, we will be also, in addition to getting out to the public, we'll be rolling out online an opportunity for the public to give their feedback from the comfort of their own home, or on their time. And so these specific topics will be presented to them in that format. And through our first round, where we had an online mapping exercise, we had over, I think, over 500 participants provide their feedback in that tool. So we hope to get the same type of participation for this next round as well.
Commissioner Cavaney.
Hi, Matt, thanks. I don't know if you remember me, we worked together before, my friend, so.
Absolutely, sure.
It's been a few years, but.
Yes.
So I like this, too. I love the focus on themes is great. So one of the things that I think may help this, something I've always thought might be missing in general plans is getting developer buy-in. Because the developers are the ones that come in the door with the projects, right? And we've got to get them to buy into the themes and the methods that are being proposed. And of course, we sit up here and receive all the variance requests, you know, the, hey, we don't want to do that, we want to do this. So I don't know how you do that, but I know that this is something, as you reach out to the public for their opinion, it'd be really interesting to maybe also create and obtain that developer feedback on what they think. And they may not know at this juncture, because they may not own the land yet that we're talking about. But it's just something that's made me always wonder is, ultimately, they're the users that we end up having to face here and explain it to them, so, yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Cavaney, that's an excellent point, very one that's top of mind for us. One of the key aspects of the General Plan Advisory Group is we have members of the development community from different aspects of it participate on that committee. So that's certainly one way we're trying to get the feedback from that particular aspect of the town. But as we move forward, to your point, and we solidify some more specific text and elements of the plan, we will be coordinating with staff to identify if there's any agent or professional associations that we should be presenting to, especially when the plan is in its complete draft form, presenting to them to roll out at that time. And it might be at a more appropriate time to gain their feedback when we have more information for them to kind of sink their teeth into.
That's great insight, absolutely, yeah. All right, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? I'm assuming you'll probably come back before us with another presentation sometime in the future?
Yes, Chairman, certainly. This will be, this won't be the last time that you'll see me. We will be working, as I said, through the summer to draft the key elements of the plan. Once we have those drafts in place, we will be coming back before you to highlight some of the takeaways from that. But certainly before that meeting, we would be providing you with draft portions of the plan for you to review in increments, and then hope that in that meeting, we can get some feedback from you for incorporation into the final document that will obviously come again before you for recommendation to the council for final adoption. So multiple times, we'll be in front of you again.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you so much for all the hard work you guys are putting into this, and we look forward to seeing you again and to see what you've been finding out in the streets.
Great. Well, just as a fleeting thought, up on the screen now, is our process, just to, for the benefit of those in the audience, we'll be having some mobile workshops through the summer. As we get into October, we'll start to get into the required 60-day review process. So for everyone who may not be familiar, getting back to state requirements, when we're drafting the general plan, once we get a final initial draft of the plan, we have to put our pens down, release the plan to the public for 60 days to allow any feedback from adjacent communities, other agencies, as well as the public. So once we go through that process, we'll then finalize the plan and looking for voter, or looking for, yes, voter ratification in August of 2020. So again, Chair, Commissioners, thank you for your time. And please feel free to reach out to Catherine or myself if you have any other questions as we continue this process.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Next, we'll move along to public hearing consent items. All items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar. The commission may by a single motion approve any number of items where, after opening the public hearing, no person requests the item be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the commission shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. Is there anybody out in the public that wishes to speak on items 12 or 13, which is Gilbert Recycling Center? Or is anybody out there that wishes to speak on anything that's on the consent calendar? I see a head nodding. Have you filled out a yellow card and brought it up front? It's on non-consent, so she's okay, okay. All right. Does anybody on the commission have any conflicts of the consent calendar that they need to? So the items that we'll be voting on will be item 9, DR 18204 Candlewood Lift Station, item 10, S19-01 Valvista and Pecos, which will be continued to June 5, 2019 hearing, DR 19-14 Valvista and Pecos, which will be continued to June 5 hearing, item 12, UP 18-25 Gilbert Recycling Center, which will be continued to the June 5 hearing, June 13, item 13, DR 18163 Gilbert Recycling Center, which will be continued to the June 5 hearing, item 14, Z1903 LDC Text Amendment, which will be continued to the June 5 hearing, and items 19, GP 18-15 Cadiz, which will be continued to the June 5 hearing, item 20, Z18-29 Cadiz, which will be continued to the June 5 hearing. Vice Chair, can I get a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we approve the consent agenda you just discussed, items 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 19, and 20.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say no. Consent calendar is approved. Now we'll move along to public hearing non-consent items. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at an individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission voided by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the number, item number, on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. First item will be item 15, Z19-04 LDC Text Amendment. This one's being asked to continue to September 4 hearing, but we do have some people from the public here that would like to speak on this.
Commissioner Anderson, I apologize, Chairman Anderson, members of the commission, even though this is a continuance item, we do request, as you saw, that there are members of the public that wish to speak. You saw this last month at study session initiated the text amendment for the addition of historic or rooftop sign types within the Heritage District. Just to provide you an update of what's happened since then, it did go to the redevelopment commission on April 17, and at the redevelopment commission, the commission recommended postponement of the text amendment until after consideration of the updated Heritage District Design Guidelines, which are anticipated to be brought forth to the Town Council for approval in fall of this year. So staff is requesting a continuance for this text amendment to the September 4 Planning Commission. This is a projected date, but it may change based off of when the design guidelines go through, to better align this request timeline with the current timeline for the Heritage District Design Guidelines. And members of the public are here to speak and would like to comment on the proposed text amendment.
Okay, thank you for the insight on that. The first card I have here is from Dolores Machado. Did I pronounce that correctly? If you could just state your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes.
Address? Hi, my name's Doralee Smachado-Liddell. I'm a Gilbert resident, and I reside in the Heritage District. And the reason why I'm coming to you today is that, well, this text amendment was on the study session, and then it was introduced for public comment. Well, the public wasn't there, and I didn't realize that there was a study session that addressed this. But today, I have my neighbors here who are knowledgeable about the text amendment. And I think this is a great opportunity for the public to realize that the redevelopment plan is what I'm talking about. When asked for public comment, the public comment was actually done when the redevelopment plan went through the process. It was a very long process. The public had input, and it was approved by the council in August of 2018. I will just say that during that time, at any meeting, in all meetings, the text amendment or having rooftop signs on the buildings were never mentioned. And I know at a different meeting, they stated that, and a developer came to them about a year-plus ago, who wanted rooftop signs. So I would say to the developer, if that was the case, why wasn't that addressed during the public hearings? So that the public had the ability to comment on it. But the public did have, did comment on the redevelopment plan, and the redevelopment plan was approved. What I'm here to say is that the text amendment goes against the redevelopment plan. And what I'd like, I heard today through the town employees, that they were going to deviate from a plan, which wasn't even approved by a council. So I asked the commissioners not to deviate from the redevelopment plan. That is a plan that has been approved. And I say that because I feel that the, having rooftop signs is a substantial change to the redevelopment plan. And in that, that would have to go back to the public for public input and notify all residents, neighbors in the Heritage District. My neighbors who are here today, they didn't have any knowledge about what was going on, but they do now. I would also like to state the reasons why I feel that this is going against the redevelopment plan. It goes against the character and vision. In character and vision- redevelopment plan. It goes against the character and vision. In character and vision in the redevelopment plan, on page 14, goal number one is, the objective is to preserve the picturesque views of the water tower along Gilbert Road and the western storefronts. That goes against having rooftop signs on the buildings. In addition to that, on page 22, placemaking strategy, it says preserving the town's history, and that the prominence of the water tower be celebrated, and that development regulations to help ensure new development does not overpower this historic icon. And I am saying that that, in just having the rooftop signs, will overpower the water tower, which is an icon for Gilbert, an icon that has existed since 1927, I think. That icon is Gilbert's icon. We don't need another icon. We have it. That's our history. That's our heritage. We don't need to change that. We need to preserve that. In addition to that, it also, the plan goes into the Gilbert Land and Development Code, and in that, it does talk about signage. But it talks about signage to provide standards, to limit the signs and the location of signage, not to increase it, not to put it on rooftops. It's to have the characteristics of that old town, the small-town feel. In addition to that, in the development code, building height limitations were established, and the recommendations are the 55 feet, 55 feet along Gilbert Road and Vaughn. That's in order to preserve the water tower view shed. Having this text amendment circumvents that. Going from 55 feet to 65 feet, because that's the text amendment, to increase the height of the building, I believe, again, that it is a substantial change to the redevelopment plan, and should, if changed, go back to the people. I would also say that many, many municipalities, towns across the country, they do not allow rooftop signs. They don't allow it. They only allow it if it's a historic rooftop sign, and then they may allow it for preservation purposes. The reason why they don't allow it, because it's sign clutter. It clutters the skyline. And in addition to that, it's basically sign pollution. And part of the redevelopment plan, and the reason why we have the redevelopment plan, is to eliminate blight in our neighborhood. And I ask that you do not bring and introduce sign blight into our neighborhood. And that is key in the redevelopment plan. I would also ask, we always ask about developers. The developers, the reason why we have the redevelopment plan and the master plan is so that they know what they're coming into. Now, you say the developers own land, but in this case, they do not. 65% of the land, or the majority of the land, are owned by the town of Gilbert, which are taxpayers. And they are entrusting the council, the Planning Commission, to preserve the heritage and implement the plan. So, I ask you, I know that today, hopefully, that it will be continued, but I think my neighbors here, who are, have lived in the neighborhood for 50 years, 20 years, that's Gilbert's heritage. And we, when we look at, we do not want to look up at rooftop signs because they're not necessary. They don't provide anything to the neighborhood. It's basically advertising for the developer. In addition to that, the way the text amendment is written, it does, you can put a rooftop sign, but you cannot control what words are that go on the sign. So, unless you have Heritage District, and then you can put anything you want on that, because you cannot regulate the content of the sign. So, that is opening the town and the taxpayers up to a great liability in addition to the blight and the sign pollution. So, that is all I have to say, and I thank you for listening, and I hope that, once this comes back up, that you please revisit the redevelopment plan, because it only comes up once every 10 years, and there is a reason for that. And I thank you for your time.
All right, thank you for your time. And just to remind you, we'll have an opportunity in September to come back up and voice your opinion again, if you'd like. I do have a few other cards here, but it sounds, it looks as though they don't wish to speak, but they are opposed to the item. Sandra Tristan is opposed. She is opposed to rooftop signs. Am I correct that you still do not want to address the Commission? Okay. Okay, thank you. I hope I pronounced this right. Esther Okez is opposed to the item, is opposed to rooftop signs. And Manuela Tristan, did I pronounce that right? Okay. Okay. Is also opposed to rooftop signs and the item. So, with that, we'll entertain a motion to continue this item to the September 4 hearing. Vice Chair, can I get a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we continue this Z19-04 LDC text amendment to the September 4, 2019 hearing.
Motion to continue. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Torgerson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Next, we're going to group 16, 17, and 18 together in the same presentation, but vote on them individually. It'll be use permit 1840 Cooper and Guadalupe Retail, use permit 19-16 Cooper and Guadalupe Retail, and DR 18-208 Cooper and Guadalupe Retail. Sidney.
Good evening. As Commissioner Anderson just stated, we are combining three of the items into one presentation. They are all on the same subject site, so that's why we're doing such, to avoid confusion and get it going in one bout. So, the site is located at the northeast corner of Cooper and Guadalupe Roads. It's approximately 1.07 acres and is a vacant parcel within the existing Casa de Cooper commercial center, and there's also an existing gas station on the western portion of the greater site area that has been there since 1995. There are three requests before each night, and they will each need their own individual motion, the first being a use permit to allow vehicle services light in the neighborhood commercial district, the second to allow a use permit to have restaurant limited services in the neighborhood commercial district, and the third, a design review for the overall design landscaping elevations for the subject site. To provide some brief context for the site, this site has laid bacon for a number of years. The gas station was the first to be built on the site to the west in 1995. The Casa de Cooper did come in later, in 2005, and that is the office and retail existing to the north and to the east. There were two previously approved designs on the existing vacant parcel, that is our subject site tonight. The first was a Jack-in-the-Box in 2002 that also had a use permit for this exact same proposed use of restaurant limited services. That did not come to fruition, and then a human bean coffee, which is a small-scale coffee drive-thru, was proposed in 2007, and that also did not go into fruition as well, and has expired. You did see this at study session in February of this year. I do want to let you know that an additional use permit was added to the site, and the overall design of the site was greatly modified to accommodate for this new proposed use and redesigned. To go over the site plan with you, there are two buildings proposed on the site. The first, Pad A, which is approximately 2,400-square-foot restaurant. This is for the conditional use permit for a restaurant limited service. What makes this different than any other of our other restaurant items in our code is that it is a fast-food type user. A fast-food type user with a drive-thru is something that does require a conditional use permit in the neighborhood commercial district, thus creating the request. The second, Pad B, is approximately a 2,500-square-foot automobile repair shop with six service spaces and a 200-square-foot office lobby area. Both of the buildings are located on the northern portion of the site, and as I'd like to point out, as I was talking about earlier, up here to the north and up here to the east over here are existing retail buildings. The greater site area beyond those is the Silverhawk Residential Community, but the two proposed buildings, since they are in this vacant pad, are buffered by that existing, those existing buildings, along with some existing landscaping ranging from 10 to 40 feet behind the commercial. Some of the drive aisles are existing on the site that they're utilizing, such as the ones to the north and the west. They also are proposing connections to the northwest and east to Guadalupe Road and Cooper Road. They exceed the landscape requirement by 14% and are providing foundation landscaping on both buildings, and also along the proposed drive-thru located here to the west of the Pad A restaurant. Before I get into the elevations, I just wanted to provide you some context, both of the existing center. As you'll see, the Casa de Cooper offices and retail were an influence to the design of the new buildings, along with the gas station. Moving on to the colors and materials, there is a more neutral palette, again, matching with the colors and materials or complementary to what is existing on the site. The first Pad A, the first, I apologize. The first pad is Pad A, which is the restaurant building. You're going to see the street frontage up here, and here on the west elevation, you are, is where the drive-thru will come through. Moving on to Pad B, which is the automobile repair shop, you're going to see on the eastern elevation, which is facing that drive-thru on the eastern portion of the site. It has the six bays, so that's where all of the work will be conducted for the business. And this is, I do want to emphasize, vehicle repair light, not heavy. Heavy is not permitted in neighborhood commercial district, so this is going to limit it to more of minor automobile repair, oil changes, and those types of items. And I also do want to add, in the neighborhood commercial zoning district, you're only permitted to have hours of operation in between 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. at night, and that is a restriction placed on the zoning district that will be implemented for both the auto repair and for the restaurant. For both of the conditional use permits presented to you, you do have to, they do have to meet the findings of facts in order to be approved, and staff believes that both the proposed use permits do meet these four findings. And staff's recommendations are to make the findings of facts and approve UP 1840, and that's the use permit for vehicle services light, and then also make the findings of fact and approve UP 19-16, which is to allow restaurant limited service. And the third is the designer view for the subject site and the site plan elevations landscaping that you saw. And I am here for questions.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Is there any on the Commission who have comments or questions for staff at this time?
Sidney, I believe I heard you say that the hours of, the hours are going to be limited to 11:00 p.m. at night. For a food restaurant, that seems a little bit early, maybe. I don't know. I'm wrong, but...
Chairman Bloomfield, so for the neighborhood commercial zoning district, that is our smallest commercial zoning district, so any type of business is limited to that unless they do pursue a separate conditional use permit to modify those hours of operations. So, there is no specific user identified at this time, like a McDonald's, that'd be 24 hours or something like that. So, if someone were to move into there a tenant, and they would like to pursue that, they could come back and get a use permit to modify those hours of operations. But all uses are limited to that in the commercial zoning district.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. John.
Well, thank you so much for the presentation. I think the elevation, what were your questions? Elevation-wise, I think they matched the center and pretty much worked with what they had, so I didn't see any issues. I do have a question on the floor plan on, why is there two doors right next to each other? See the bottom one? There's like two sets of doors. I don't know if that was a mistake, or they planned on having that caged off, or is that a service of some sort, or?
Commissioner John, so back there is proposed just to be landscaping, so I'd have to look into exactly why they're proposing those. I can...
Yeah, they don't go to a pad. They don't go to anything, so I'm just kind of...
Correct, because right 10 feet after that is the Arco gas station, so it's just landscaping back there. So, that is something that I did not look into, unfortunately.
By code, you have to have some sort of, you at least have, I think, a five-foot-by-five-foot or three-foot-by-three-foot pad or something like that. So, besides that, I think they did a great job. They fit a lot on a little tiny site. And did the sanitation, take a look at the dumpster? Or they, did they approve the dumpster and the size, being that they're sharing between two buildings?
Commissioner John, yes, Environmental Services did look at this and approve it prior to it coming before you.
All right, I have no other comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Cavaney.
So, anytime you have a drive-thru, of course, you worry about queuing of cars and so forth. And I notice it looks like they've moved the menu board around the curve to kind of create longer queuing. Were there any comments by traffic about fear of people backing into the main drive aisle, or we good?
Commissioner Cavaney, yeah, they're required to have four spaces of vehicle queuing for this type of proposed development, so that's approximately 80 feet, because 20 feet in length is required. So, they did meet that, and that's why it does snake around the corner a little bit more, because we do want to avoid that type of traffic conflict in the drive aisle. So, that number is in our land development code and is intended to try to mitigate that.
Perfect. So, that menu board location will be fixed by that. Okay, wonderful. Thank you. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is the applicant here, and do they want to say anything to the Commission? No? Okay. Anybody from the public here wish to speak on this case? So, we'll close the public hearing. And is there any further discussion up here? No? Okay. All right, so let's just go right down the road and start putting motions on here. So, whoever's making a motion, if you could go to the staff report and read the recommended, read the motion from the first page of the staff report, the recommended motion, so that we can properly do this correctly, right? Okay. So, we'll start with Item 16, UP 18-40 Cooper and Guadalupe. Does anybody want to make a motion on that?
Chairman, I'll make a stab.
Vice Chair.
Chairman, I move to make the findings of fact and approve UP 18-40 Cooper and Guadalupe Retail, a conditional use permit for approximately 1.07 acres located at the northeast corner of Cooper and Guadalupe Roads to allow vehicle services light in the neighborhood commercial zoning district with a planned area development overlay subject to the conditions as listed. Really just one condition, the project should be in substantial performance with the site plan shown and the exhibits provided under Attachment Number 4.
All right, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Cavaney. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Item 17, Use Permit 19-16 Cooper and Guadalupe Retail. Who would like to take a stab at that motion?
I'll do it. So, Chairman, I move to make the findings of fact and approve UP 19-16 Cooper and Guadalupe Retail, a conditional use permit for approximately 1.07 acres located at the northeast corner of Cooper and Guadalupe Roads to allow a restaurant limited service in the neighborhood commercial zoning district with a planned area development overlay.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Smith. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Last one's Item 18, DR 18-208 Cooper and Guadalupe. Can I get a motion, please?
I can do it. Chairman, I move to approve the findings of fact and approve DR 18-208 Cooper and Guadalupe Retail, site plan, landscaping, grading, and drainage, elevations, floor plans, lighting, and colors and materials for approximately 1.07 acres, generally located at the northeast corner of Cooper and Guadalupe Roads, and zoned neighborhood commercial with a planned area development overlay.
Motion for approval is there a second? Commissioner Torgerson with the second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion is approved. Next, we will do Item 21, Z18-30 Land Development Code text amendment, remove multifamily and RC. Aye.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of Planning Commission. Would you like a full presentation on this, or do you have some specific questions you'd like to ask regarding it? Nothing has significantly changed since the initiation and study session, but I can briefly go over it if you choose.
I think you presented it during study session last month. Is that correct? Is that correct?
In April.
April. Was there anybody here that we were missing in April? Ebony and Smith? So can you do like a medium presentation?
Sure. Z-1830 is to remove MF from RC. Right now, multifamily is allowed in regional commercial with a use permit for integrated mixed use. That was brought forward and approved in 2014 for the use permit. In 2017, design guidelines were adopted. In October of 2018, the town council at their retreat requested that staff initiate a text amendment to remove multifamily from regional commercial as a standalone use under the use permit. And I quote, "It did not live up to the expectations of integrated mixed use." So with that being said, staff has initiated a multifamily text amendment to allow for multifamily at a higher density than 25 in order to match a category that already exists within our general plan, which is 25 to 50. And we are studying if there is another way to look at integrated mixed use. However, at this time, we are going to move forward to remove MF from regional commercial as a use permit. Loft above living is still allowed, and that you can have a integrated mixed use development through a PAD process if you'd like to go through that zoning. However, we are going to look at taking this to council together with any other changes to the multifamily zoning district or any other kind of integrated mixed use in August that we just -- this was on the agenda. It was noted, so we went ahead to move forward with it, but it will not be going further to town council until we're ready with the rest of the text amendments that are in tandem. This will affect Sections 2.306. It will strike all of that section. It will strike the use permit from Section 2.9. And in Chapter 2 of the Land Development Code, it will strike the design guidelines for integrated mixed use multifamily and regional commercial. With that being said, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I'm sure Commissioner Caveney has...
Just one thing, and I know I did miss some of your presentation last time. I apologize for being absent. And I think this is -- first of all, I applaud this. I think this is the -- given the parameters that were around the previous scenario, I think the town was at risk. And I think that this is a fair step in the right direction to make sure we do it right. And so thank you to everyone who's been part of this. Just one question with the loft living, because I do agree that that is a good outcome to mixing residential with the retail. Are there any parameters, and again, I haven't really read anything detailed on that, but are there any parameters around that loft living? Is there any detail about what would be allowed, or is it really on a case-by-case PAD overlay kind of review?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner Caveney. Loft living has been allowed by law right within regional commercial and in other zoning districts with the town of Gilbert for many years. There are no set parameters. There is no density cap on the loft living, so it's whatever you can fit on the site that you have, so it would just be reviewed under design review if it didn't require any kind of zoning modification. It would also have to meet the height limitations within regional commercial or whatever PAD you may be within. So as far as whether there's requirements for amenities such as pool and all, you know, playground and all the other typical multifamily amenities, at this point in time, no, there's not because loft living was always more envisioned as a very urban environment, and a lot of times, that really comes with what the market driving force is for the demographic you're trying to serve within your loft living. But that is something that we can definitely think about in the future as we move forward with, especially with our more urban, dense multifamily. That is the discussion we have been having about what is an appropriate amenity package for 25 to 50 dwelling units per acre that may very well be in a similar urban environment.
And maybe it doesn't need more parameters. Maybe we allow some creativity here because it is going in the right direction up with the residential living. So I think that's great and anxious to kind of see it move forward and very supportive. So thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone? You're the applicant, and you gave your presentation. Is anybody from the public here that would just like to speak on this item? Not seeing any? All right. So if we have nothing more to go, we'll close the public hearing. Is there any further discussion up here? It sounds like we kind of finally got this RC stuff under handle now, which is good. So I will entertain a motion.
Chairman.
Vice Chair.
For the reasons set forth in the staff report, I move to recommend approval to the town council for Z-1830 as requested.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Caveney. Any further discussion? Nope. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Motion carries. Administrative items. Administrative items are for the commission discussion and action. It is the discretion of the majority of the commission regarding public input requests on any administrative item. Persons wishing to speak on an admin item should complete a public comment form indicating the number on which you wish to address. The commission may or may not accept public comment. Public commission minutes, consider approval of the minutes of the study session and regular meeting of April 3, 2019. Vice Chair, can I get a motion on that, please?
Chairman, I move to approve the planning commission minutes from our last meeting on April 3, 2019.
Motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Second from who? Commissioner Frolak? Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed say no. Minutes are approved.
I abstained because I was absent.
Okay. Thank you for that. Communications. Report from chairman and members of the commission on current events. I don't have anything to report. Does anybody else on the commission have something to say or report? Do you any? Report from planning manager, planning services manager on current events. Catherine.
Good evening, chairman and commissioners. I just wanted to share a few statistics with you. So we currently have 130 active planning cases right now, and in the month of March, we received 43 new ones. So things are still healthy and moving along, and thank you so much for all your work this evening and for all your input.
Does that mean all your staff is still in their offices right now, working away, staying on top of everything?
We certainly have a good variety of projects and a lot of interesting things to work on that keep us moving every day.
Okay. Well, thank you for that. If we don't have any objection, we'll adjourn the meeting. Adjourned.